It's 6:01, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And now, I'd like to call for the approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions, changes? I, as part of the discussion, I was hoping to move the resignations to the executive session.
Accept that edit. Or propose we accept that edit?
I fix that, you fix that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, we have teacher, staff, and community comments. And this evening, we have two of our wonderful teachers in person and one online. So Abby and Tori, Jill Alderman, and Kate McDougall. And I believe Abby and Tori is going to be sharing a screen presentation with us.
We had so much practice doing this for so long. I forget how to use it. I think I'm almost there. There you go. Okay. So we're beginning of first grade, but we thought we would come in and just tell you guys what we've been doing so far to build our classroom community and share some pictures. Thank you.
So I'm just gonna click through some slides. We have tons of photos, so I'm gonna kind of quick. So a little cutie pie.
Look who was first.
No, that was unplanned.
Let's go back, go back.
Super cute.
So at the beginning of the year, we just sort of obviously get them into the school year, make them want to come back to school, you know, hang out with their friends. Obviously, our biggest goal in first grade is to want, you know, have them want to be here. Otherwise, you know, learning is not nearly as much fun. So a lot of these first photos are just, you know, of them first day.
And they love getting their fixtures taken with the signs and seeing them.
And we think parents like it too, so we try.
No tears, that's good.
They made cute little crowns on the first day, so that was fun. Look closer.
So the first couple of weeks are really doing a lot of play-based exploring, giving them time to check out classroom materials, see what they can build, a lot of STEM-based experiences for them to learn how to share, how to use our classroom materials, and to be thoughtful with them. So here, you'll just see them really trying to work together to build and create.
Also good for just, you know, learning how to collaborate with one another and do these things and, you know, classroom routines, procedures, that kind of stuff. It's much easier when it's smaller and manipulative, so we can teach them with, not a full game.
And we do a lot of responsive classroom. So it's going over those routines and procedures and really focusing the first six weeks of school on developing this classroom community.
This group has a lot of really good little kids who are just very accepting and, yeah, it's a wonderful group to be with so far.
And they love playing outside. So we've been trying to get extra outdoor time in. They have their recess time, and if we can, you know, they love getting out there to explore a little more.
It's a little hot last week, but... And then also, we're obviously starting to get into some curriculum stuff too, you know, helping them, you know, learn how to be partners, whether it's buddy reading, projects, lots of fun hands-on.
Lots of read-alouts for the first week of school that go with certain projects we did together. And building that base for a reader's workshop, writer's workshop, getting them used to those, how we're setting it up with a mini lesson and their independent work and sharing. This was from math, where they did a little bit of graphing.
There was a little bit of Hegarty and Ufly in there too. So Hegarty is a funding awareness program we use. And then Ufly is new this year for K-2 at Rutland Town. It's replacing foundations, and it's really great. The kids love it. It's been a lot of fun so far, and we've really only done the getting ready lessons because tomorrow, we do the first, like, real lesson.
So we've been piloting it, which is great, and I really hope that we do adopt it after the school year.
If I can just add that I think it was like the second day of school that you were already doing Ufly. I'm like, oh my gosh, you guys are just getting right back in the routine of learning, which I love to see.
Well, the getting ready lessons are perfect for the beginning of the year because they're short, they're condensed, it's not too much, it's...
It review, for most of them, it's just reviewing some basic skills and letter recognition and formation.
They're great. We already have some Lexia certificates from kids who were far along last year, so they love that. I like that it lets them start where they were, so they can kind of keep moving along.
Just some projects that we did and some writing. Out in the hallway. They love seeing their work displayed.
And a lot of these go with some of those read-alouts and those mini lessons that Jill was telling you about, getting them used to that writer's workshop model. And then, we're both displaying all the books we've read this year. We both took a course with Lindsay Ryder last year, and this was one of the things she highly encouraged, was keeping like a record. And for younger learners, it's good if they can actually see a picture of it. So this is something we're trying to do to share, and it's kind of cool. And the kids actually already look at it and they're like, oh, remember when we read that on the first day of school? Or, so actually, it's been really fun already, even though it is kind of a pain to do every day. It's worth it.
Yeah, it'll be great, like, in January, if we need to refer back to something we did in October, to be like, you know, they can use it as a reference. And it'll be cool to see all the books we read by the end of first grade.
Right, remember the characters in this book and how do they connect to the characters in that book? It's really great. Alright, I think that's it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having us. We just wanted to show you a little bit about what the beginning of the year looks like for first grade.
Anyone have questions for us? Thank you so much for having us.
Great year.
Thank you.
And I did notice I skipped over teacher, staff, and community comments, so if anyone would like to make a comment or share something. Okay, moving back on to finance. Look who just stepped in. Thank you.
So for finance, there's financials. If anybody has questions on those, I could try to answer them or I could take notes and get back to you at the next meeting if there's a question I can't answer tonight. If there's no questions on financials, I'm gonna talk a little bit about budget and the process for this coming year. So at this time, we're just going to review the timeline for the FY '25, right? No, FY, yeah, FY '25 budgets. Seems so...
Are you aging yourself?
Yeah.
Wait a second.
So we went over the budget timeline at the SU meeting earlier this month. And the SU and the local boards each follow a slightly different timeline. So typically, the SU board starts, starts the process this month. We talk about the timeline, we talk about the process, and the steps in the process for each month. In October, we'll present the first draft to the SU board. We'll take feedback from the, the board provided us a little bit of feedback at the last meeting. But once they have a chance to see the first draft, we'll review that in detail. They'll provide us with additional feedback on how it looks compared to where they really want to see it and what the local impacts will be. We'll take that back. I'll meet with the central office administrators. We'll fine-tune it based on the recommendations from the board. And we'll bring that back to the November board meeting at the beginning of November. And hopefully, we'll be looking for the SU board to approve the SU budget at the November board meeting. And the reason why we start that process so early and we want to have an approval so early is that we know what kind of impact the SU budget is going to have on the local budgets. Because each local board is paying a general fund assessment, and they're paying a special ed assessment. But then there's also some other, other items like billbacks if there's SU employees that are shared between buildings or shared between the SU and the local district. So once we have all those pieces, it helps us look at then the local budget. So moving on to the local budget side. So the timeline was put into the packet. Typically, we would start this process in October, where we would start these early discussions, looking at the timeline, having the board telling us, telling the administration, so me, Sarah, and Chris, what you would like to see as priorities in this budget process, things you want to have added in or taken out, or estimates, and know what kind of impacts they'll have on the budget. We are moving it a month earlier tonight just because of my availability next month. I'm not available in person. I really like to have these discussions in person. So then, November is when we would be looking at reviewing the first draft of the Rutland Town budget, as well as all the other local budgets. At that time, we would, we would hope that the board would give us some feedback as to how they think the budget looks and we're, what direction they want it to go in, so that we can then go back if we need to sharpen our pencils or do some research, whatever things we need to do, so that we can bring back another budget in December that maybe has some changes and is closer to what you are anticipating you want it to look like. We really won't start getting any state data, and the state data does have a significant impact on tax rates. It doesn't necessarily impact your budget, but it does impact what the taxpayers are going to see on their end. So like equalized pupils, CLAs, yields. We won't have any of that information in December, so we won't be able to make a decision then. We hope to have some of that information by January. We used to have it in time, we used to have a lot of it by December 15th, but the state has... Over the last few years, it's been later and later that we've been seeing it. So in January, the beginning of January, we would meet again. We'd be looking at the third draft, and we would be looking to approve the budget at that time so that we could then start preparing for town meeting, the Rutland Town, pre-town meeting, getting the booklets ready for the town report that goes out and the brochures that we send out. In the past, sometimes Rutland Town has not necessarily approved it at their first meeting in January, but they've gotten it to the point where it's ready to approve, and we're not going to make any more changes. And then they've approved it at the pre-town meeting. I don't believe that's how we did it last year, but that's something we can discuss as we go through the process. So that, that sums up the timeline. So tonight, I'm looking for just some feedback from the board, if you're ready to discuss it. Stuff that you have in your mind, maybe that you have been thinking about over the last few months or a year that you'd like to either see in the budget or you'd like us to research and bring back and put to the side of the budget, but just so that you have information and we can decide later whether you want it in the budget or not. So we can have that discussion tonight. You could have it again next month. And then any feedback that you, that you discuss, I'll incorporate that all into my first draft. I'm meeting with Sarah later this month, and I'll find out what her priorities are and what's going on in her school and what things we need to move around, increase, decrease, stuff like that. So all of those pieces will be incorporated into that first draft.
If, if we proceed with the second floor, would any of that be in the, would we need to put that in the budget for next year? Or would that be where we're going out for a bond and it would be the following year?
It would probably, most likely be the following year because the bond, by the time you go out for bid, get your bids, do the bond pool, which is twice a year, and then the first bond payment isn't immediate. So you'd probably be looking at FY '26.
And then, the board will be discussing lifetime sports later. So if that's something that we approve, would that be something that you would want to factor into budget?
If, if it's gonna have an expense on the budget, yes.
And then, at the SU meeting, I had asked you to consider bussing for ESY. So that would be both, is that more from the SU standpoint or Rutland Town standpoint? Or is that...
So to clarify, so at the SU meeting, you said summer school, I believe, and you said academic summer school. So are you referring to ESY as in special ed summer school?
ESY and summer school for both.
So ESY, so, so for Rutland Town in the past, they've done, well, ESY, and then they've done a small tutoring group over, I think, four, three or four weeks?
Three weeks.
Three weeks. Is that the, the piece that you're referring to? Not the enrichment piece that we do through the Boys and Girls Club?
That, I was not asking for the enrichment piece. I'm not saying it wouldn't be bad to have both possibly, so that we just have, you know, both to look at. But I know that, speaking with you, Sarah, at the end of last year, you had mentioned that, you know, there were so many kids recommended for summer school, and only maybe half-ish were able to come or chose to come. And with transportation possibly being an obstacle for some families, just looking at possibly, you know, trying to bring up equity by...
I don't know if it was always transportation.
So it is a Rutland Town discussion. You can change transportation that doesn't impact other schools. Our transportation contract's pretty flexible as far as, we could add transportation, we can take away transportation, all within our contract.
Could we make it more reliable?
Well, I mean, I think transportation suffers the same issues that we face in our schools and many businesses face with staff shortages, and they don't have a very large pool to pull from when they're short a driver to find another driver. And so it has impacted schools in our SU pretty significantly over the last few years. And I think this is an issue that probably occurred before COVID, but I think it's been more prominent the last couple of years after COVID. So like Wells went down from two buses to one bus for several months last year while they were hiring a new bus driver and training him, getting him his certifications and licensing. I don't think Rutland Town was impacted too significantly as, as much as the other schools were, but it could happen at, at any time. Luckily, you have, I think, five buses. So if, if you are short a driver, you can probably tweak things a little bit so that you can pick up everybody, if you, if you lose a driver temporarily, pick up everybody and still meet the needs of your children in your school without a significant impact. But in a smaller town where they only have maybe one or two buses, that's a lot more difficult. Definitely, I can speak with our transportation coordinator, I betcha, and see what a cost would be for a Rutland Town pickup for the summer, and we can get it like a daily rate.
And I'm guessing it wouldn't possibly need all five buses, is that correct, Sarah?
Correct. I just think that's a need. I, I would want to know, we may budget for buses that we don't need.
So maybe...
You know, like, how many, I don't know how many families did not attend summer school or ESY due to lack of transportation. And I think since the Boys and Girls Club was just late to notify families once they went through licensing and got all, everything up and running, I think that was the struggle, that some families had already secured summer programming, like in the city and other areas. So they were like, I wish I'd known, because if you bring them here to summer school, they can just go right to Boys and Girls Club afterwards, and then parents can pick up at the end of the day. So I just get nervous that when we drop kids off on a bus, kindergarten through third grade, we need to have a parent present. So I just think there's some, what is the need?
Well, I think knowing what the cost, if it's something that we can do, then we can...
We need to know what the need is first. Do we need five buses? Do we need one bus?
Right. I, I don't know. I, I mean, how many, if it's just for the academic program, I think we could probably look at the average number of students that were recommended. And then, looking at the bus routes and seeing if, you know, if you...
But some parents choose not to send them for a variety of reasons. They may say they go to their dad's in New York for the summer. We're going camping, school vacations, I'll pay for my own tutor. There's like a variety of reasons why parents don't come. Some of them say, I can't because of bussing. I can't pick them up and then bring them to the Rutland City RAG program, for example, is a few that I heard from.
Yeah, I think it would probably be helpful to do a survey of the people that were, maybe were recommended and didn't come and see if, if bussing was that barrier. And if bussing was provided in the future, would that, I mean, I, that's probably the only way you'll, you'll know is by doing a survey.
So I guess we're trying to say, chicken or the egg? Should we do the survey first or find out information first?
Well, I mean, I can get a cost for a bus and, and per, per, per day. And then if we know if we, I, I don't think we'll need more than one bus for student numbers, but we probably will need it based on how far they're going and the routes. So, I mean, we can get a per-bus cost, and then we can go from there based on what the need is.
We may not be able to fit it in the budget either. The survey will be kind of like meh, you know? But also finding out what it would cost to bring them to the school for the summer program, enrichment program. Just then, a survey, you know, if a bus were available, would that be something that you would be willing to, to pay for or use if it was free? That would be helpful too, just to know.
Get kids up, you bring them to the school, and then the tutoring only goes part-day. So you're gonna bring those kids home, and then the other kids that are staying in the enrichment, and then you bring those kids home at the end of the day?
I think if we're only doing the summer program, it would only be the two trips. And if they're choosing to stay after, then the parent would have to pick them up.
At the end of the...
At the end of the day.
At the end of your enrichment.
Yeah. But then the other option would, if we were doing it for the summer enrichment program as well, then we would need three trips for those, the kids that aren't staying for the summer enrichment. And then, those that are coming for this, the ESY and summer tutoring and the end of the day. Thank you. And then...
Excuse me, team, up the camera? Can you control the camera over there? Because it's only showing Lewis. Is anyone else in here?
We've been talking about school trips. So it'd be nice, I don't know if Sarah's got the data to say, you know, what, what are the classrooms raising to spend on that? Because we talked about the board coming up with those funds and putting that in as a toggle.
We can add that as a wishlist item. I think that's been a wishlist item for a few years now.
Well, I think that we agreed last meeting that we were definitely paying for the seventh grade trip, so that should go in there. It's not...
That was out of surplus from last year, though.
No, that was going forward. That's what the whole policy was about.
That's changeable, correct.
Correct. And then I think we were going to discuss if we were gonna do more than that, but I think we already agreed that we were doing that in perpetuity. We just hadn't gotten the correct wording yet. From, from the lawyer, yeah. And we had also talked in the past, Sarah, about a kindergarten para, that second one. So I think that would be a wishlist as well, to see what that would look like to have two kindergarten paras instead of just one shared into the budget. And...
I, I mean, I have a wishlist.
Yeah.
But I don't know if you want me to share some of those things now. I haven't had a chance to talk to Mike or meet with Lewis yet, so usually...
Well, the wish, we can do either. Lewis isn't going to be here next meeting, so we can still gather our wishlist and give them to you for next meeting. Plus, you haven't had your meeting with him yet.
Correct.
So you can probably share them with him at that time.
And also share them with us at some point, because I'd love to hear.
Yeah, and some of them are the same things that I've shared in previous years, such as the kindergarten para. Yep. And we're trying to get kindergarten numbers a little bit earlier this year, knowing that things were pushed up a little bit. So then, I'm hoping I can get a more accurate number of what our incoming kindergarten classroom will look like, which will impact budget as well.
Great. Thank you.
Is there any teacher needs that you're seeing with the increase in population?
We are in desperate need of substitutes, desperate need of substitutes. So we are, we need a custodian. We need, we have two immediate needs for two full-time para, special education para educators right now. And we really need substitutes for preschool, so that puts us in a really big bind. Thank you to the families that have been flexible. We've had to close a preschool classroom this Friday due to staffing. We had to close early on Monday due to staffing. So when you have a preschool teacher that's out or sick, in order to get a substitute in there, they have to have a number of credentials, different credentials, and training. And since all of our current paras that may have that training are one-on-ones, we have no wiggle room, or if they're out sick. So we need a custodian, we need a full-time special educator, we need two para educators. We should be posting for a planning room assistant. That job description was finalized today after the resignations approved. So, yeah, food service has been struggling with staff as well.
He's already in the budget.
I was just gonna say, these things are...
Some of the special education para educators were not budgeted for. Those are for new students that have enrolled. So I'm hoping that next meeting, Bill Basic may be able to come and just talk, after Lewis is able to look at some numbers, to talk about how those may, may impact our, our current budget. Because those positions, the para position, special ed positions were not budgeted for this year.
So para, special ed positions are an SU expense and then the full SU budget for special ed after we deduct all the revenues that we receive, and then that gets assessed out to all the districts based on a metric of number of IEP students per district. So if Rutland Town's adding any special ed expenses, that cost gets spread across the full SU. And same thing with, if any other school's adding those costs. And that helps level out the, the spikes and the dips in that expense. We, we probably, I mean, we'll have an idea of what that impact will be after the October GRC SU board meeting, and then definitely by the November. Thankfully, due to the change in the board meeting schedule, so the SU meeting will be before you even see, the final SU board meeting, where we approve the draft or approve the budget, will be before you even look at your first draft. So we'll know what those impacts are prior to you even starting your budget discussions.
Back to, at least from my perspective, that's not a wishlist, that's a mandate, right? I mean...
Yes, that's a need. It's a have-to.
It's not like, hey, I want more paras. We just, that's gonna happen.
That's what I'm saying, that's what we need, teachers need right now, is because we don't have them. So we need subs, paras, special ed paras. We need a custodian.
I see that. I, I don't think there's gonna be a really easy answer for the pre-K sub issue, given that they probably have to have licensures or whatnot to hang out with little kids. And I'm assuming you wouldn't have those unless you were running a private daycare or you were planning to be a full-time, and why would you have that?
So Ellen Coyle is working. We do have a, a parent that's a substitute here, is wonderful. That person is actually helping us fill a special education para position. Usually, that person has gone through all the training to be a preschool para in our building. Our new preschool assistant that we hired was the preschool sub for us last year, and we hired her as our preschool assistant. So Ellen Coyle, I had sent her another email. She is phenomenal, she's doing the best that she can, but she's our substitute coordinator, and she just doesn't have the pool of candidates. Because I think we had, I mean, I can look, like, seven unfilled positions today.
Yeah, I could speak to both of those things. Yeah, so two things are going on. I mean, one, we keep bringing in new subs, and the schools are recruiting them to be, fill their full-time positions. So it's kind of, we're, we're putting people there temporarily and then, I mean, it's, it's good, good and bad. I mean, we then find candidates that are gonna fill out full-time positions, but then again, it then drains our sub pool. So it is an ongoing challenge, and we continue our recruitment efforts to bring in more and more subs. On the pre-K side, we did hire a new position last year through the SU budget. It's our early ed and after-school coordinator. And, her name's Sarah Taylor, and she's go, she's working with all the schools to make sure that more of our in-school staff and our subs are getting the trainings necessary so that they can be qualified to sub in our preschool classrooms. So it's gonna take some time, because there's a, a list of different trainings that they need. But I think it already started with, like, I think like 40 people got CPR training at the beginning of the school year, which is one of the preschool requirements. And then there's, there's like a nine-hour orientation training and a mandated reporter training. So she, she's working with all...
Fingerprints, background checks, because they don't talk to the agency of education. The two entities don't, so you have to go somewhere else to get different fingerprints and background checks. It's just, there's a process.
So we're making efforts...
Things not thought about, mandatory pre-K, let's just do it.
So we're making the efforts to, to try to be more flexible and be able to pull our paras to, to our preschool classroom, because then we can get subs to fill our para positions if, if, if we, if we can fill those positions. Because, so that Sarah and the other principals have more flexibility... so that Sarah and the other principals have more flexibility to shift things around and to the everyday challenges.
So, so would raising the cost for paras and that kind of stuff and custodian, would that bring? Would that potentially bring people in, get their attention?
Raising the rates.
You know, that's, that's kind of what's happened with bus drivers. It's, it's now it's not nothing to sneeze at now. It's a deep, really decent.
Oh, they gave an increase, Jeff?
Wow. That's great.
So it's like-
Budgetarily, we're talking about that at the S U level. I think we decided to-
Right. But if we, if we don't do some increasing, we're gonna continue to have this problem every year.
Yeah, we're actively talking about that at the S U level. And I think we decided to do some research and a personnel issue. I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but we're already discussing that. Cause talking about it as a blanket across our entire S U.
You just compare to Rallentown City pays. We're not even close. So we need to get in the ballpark.
We're doing that research right now. But my thoughts were as I'm heading up to the possibly going up to the Vermont Super Bowl, or school board thing, is like to push back on Vermont needing to add some resources to us. I mean, seemingly pre-K subs need some more licensure in a, in an environment that they created. They should be helping us solve this problem.
And there was talk in the legislature, cause years ago I spoke to some of our representatives to say, can you have preschool governed by the agency of education? So if we have a preschool within our school, can we oversee that? And there was talk and then COVID hit. I mean, I was actively talking about this, cause to me it just doesn't make sense. Um, but Sarah Taylor's been great. Ellen Coyle's been great. People are working on it. We just don't have people. We've had um, one qualified custodian apply in the last two weeks, um, that's interested in working elsewhere. So I, we just, I don't, we have two part-time right now. They're awesome. That used to work for us, that just, it'll come back and work for Kelly. I love your school, part-time, just to help you guys get by. But I'm just nervous that we don't, we still don't have anybody and they've been here a week. But I think this is, I mean, across the country, we're looking for people to work.
So if you have any more thoughts, we'll bring them next meeting and shoot them off to you. Yes. Thank you, Louis.
You're welcome.
All right. So moving on to the second floor update. Um, so last meeting, we got the final estimate for cost. And, um, I wrote to Ed Clark and Skylar um, about the fact that we were wondering if they could split up the project. Um, and kind of do it piecemeal potentially. And I just wanted to read his response. Um, he asked what we had in mind for phasing. He said, at a minimum, we, they would need to do the elevator stairway, ceiling finishing and any life safety items in the first phase. This would give you access to the unfinished space you have, but may not be occupiable by students. To do that, you would need to at least do bathrooms, lighting and an additional H V A C. He said, it's not really an easily phased project and phasing will add to the overall cost to get the finished project of the full scope as designed. At $285 dollar square feet, or per, at $285 dollars per square feet, the project is actually significantly less expensive than building a standalone 8,500 square foot classroom building, which would be more likely 450 to 500 square feet. Sorry. 450 to 500 per square foot. Um, he also said, one thing to keep in mind for a bond vote on this project, we should put together a total project budget that would include permitting and soft costs on top of the construction budget. So I wanted to share that with the board and not give him my perspective on it. And then Mike and Sarah did a great job of surveying the teachers. Thank you. Um, so Mike, do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah. Um, and, and that's in the, the drive to, um, the survey results. And so teachers, we had, uh, last I looked, 33, I think that responded. And many of them were similar responses in, um, in that it provides more space. Um, and they can, then you can kind of ultimately get creative with movements of where people can go. A lot of teachers were thinking along the lines that we were, which is potentially having more space for middle school upstairs. And then you can have more space down here for, um, other, other, uh, like interventionists or special educators. Um, it can open up a classroom for another pre-K, different ideas like that. Um, and so there were a lot of, yeah, a lot of positive responses in those surveys. You can see them all line by line too, um, if you wanna look at them. Yeah. Absolutely.
I would say in some of this, I think in talking with teachers, my vision was to have more of 70 up there and then push, you know, this be more primary and then four, five, six up here. Um, so I thought it was pretty much everybody's kind of, for the most part, thinking the same thing. But we are running out of some space.
I know we were talking a little bit about all the other added pieces to that, like the boilers and all the upgrades that need to be done. That stuff is already there. The electrical panels are there. Um, and it's just, the plumbing and everything is, is just right there to go through the floor. That's the way it always left when we, we did this. So, uh, some of, if we could modify it a little bit, with some of it, maybe bring it down and then ask the voters, see if they'll do it. Doesn't hurt to ask.
Have you done a population trend in a while? Perhaps? Do you have those dat, that data?
For enrollment?
Yeah, where we think the next 10, 20 years look like.
I don't think we've projected down the road, um, but we do at the pre-town and town meetings, Louis usually has a graph for us of enrollment numbers over what, Louis, the past 10 years. I've been here going on 12. Do you do that?
I have like the one years enrollment.
Okay, yeah. Okay, maybe it's in the town report, but it's-
Mike, can you just touch the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, they've been steady. So I think, I mean, some of the teachers had mentioned, even though our population or our enrollment numbers have been steady, which were fortunate, um, cause a lot of schools in Vermont are seeing a huge decline in enrollment. Needs have changed. Classrooms don't look the same as they did, you know, 20 years ago.
I get that, but I think it would be helpful to, to show I, I would, I don't have the data, but I'm willing to bet our, our enrollment's going to go up. Not a ton, but it's definitely gonna go up in the next 10 to 20 years. You, you could see the demographic of if a homeowner decides to leave or someone passes away, that house is gonna be scooped up relatively quickly in Rallentown with s- school age kids. We don't have enough space right now for the kids we have. Or even if we stay at this role, we don't. So I think we're gonna trend there. My, it's not gonna be a cheap project, but my overarching word to the voters is, we should have done this 20 years ago when you built the building. Now it's amply more expensive. It's gonna be more expensive five, six years from now. Like we need it now. We're gonna need it in five or 10 years. It's gonna be expensive, but we should be doing this. And they need to know that. It's easy to vote no, but had they done this 20 years ago, we wouldn't be sitting here and it would have been a lot cheaper. It would have already been bonded out.
That's been setting empty up there for well over almost 30 years. And it's like, what is the point of having that space if we're not ever gonna use it?
Let's do it right. Let's, let's expand our campus. Let's get some things in here to make Rallentown good to great. Get some things that we should have.
When we did that, uh, study, Paul Tracy was the superintendent. And he, he did the study on that and it's like our numbers showed us going through the roof. And that's why when I was on that committee and we decided to do the second floor so that in the very near future, we could have done the addition with the seven new classrooms up there. And it just, the way everything went in the state of Vermont, everything gone the other direction and, but it's like, now I think things are for us are being held, held steady and gradually going up. And the needs, all the needs have changed across the board for everything. So it just makes, to me, it makes sense that we've, we have the space, let's use it.
I, I will say, I mean, I don't know construction, all of these things that you know, Jeff, but in asking Kelly, my husband, some people that are more, um, experienced, they were like, wow, that's a great deal. Do you think we could also do the asbestos? And some of the floors, like all in the same time. They were not shocked at that number. It, it is a big number. It is, but I think, um, the architect also said the same thing. It's gonna cost you more if you do it in pieces and this.
We can be a little more creative with everything and just get the space open and ready for the kids to use. And if there had, needs to be something later on, we could do. You know, every, every, every seven to 10 years, you should be doing something to your school, taking out a bond and doing something. Some sort of upgrades, whether it's air, carpets, whatever, flooring or furniture, any of that kind of stuff. And that hasn't happened here in a while. So I think it's time to do something.
That being said, we still have some bonds out, right, Louis?
I don't have that data with me, but we just, we just took out one a few years ago.
Yeah, like four or five years ago, I feel like.
Uh, security, the security cameras and the glass, um, the first floor glass.
And I think that's what, you know, Greg has come and looked at our, and just with all technology, it's very dated. You know, that's why we applied for the grant because some of this is needs to be redone already and we haven't even paid off that bond. But Greg has said he can do it a lot cheaper in-house and a lot user-friendly for when we redo our security cameras if we don't receive the grant.
Anything in-house is cheaper.
Yeah.
I'm on board. I think I had asked the last time. I'm not sure, but I'd, I'd love to see it broken down. Cause I, I think you know, the taxpayer is gonna say, how impactful is it to our household? Or at least in in some fiscal manner, they will, you know, so when you see two-
What that will equal?
Yeah, like what that bond's gonna break out to. I'd love to see that just, um-
Can I just clarify? So like if you say if your house is appraised for a hundred thousand dollars, it would be X cents on a hundred thousand dol- okay.
Do you know that, Louis?
Um, so I mean, if we're looking at like a say a $3 million project, say?
I forget exactly.
You do 20 years.
It was 2.4? Plus, plus there's gonna be more for the permitting, possibly sprinklers and materials for, yeah. So say 3 million.
But pennies like on, usually do this for pre-town meeting for us, like you say-
For every penny, it's, it's, um, $10 per 100,000 assessed value.
Say that again.
For every penny.
$10 per 100,000.
So if your home is assessed at a hundred thousand, it's a 10, every penny is a $10 increase.
And you think it'll be two pennies, three pennies?
Um, I, I would say between two and three.
So that's about as how much it went up last year for our whole tax rate. Is that correct?
We currently have $43,500 a year in principal debt that we pay.
Is it 43,000?
43,500.
Oh, I was thinking, nevermind.
So the whole project on an annualized basis is gonna add two to three cents? For 100,000?
That would be my quick, quick guess right now, yeah.
Two to three pennies, but that translates to $10 per 100,000 assessed value.
100,000 dollar house is like 120 bucks.
Yeah. So our tax rate is up?
Oh, it's three times a year, you're saying? I thought it was $10 per year. So when you, when you said $10 per 100,000, assessed value.
Average house, 250 to 300,000. That's-
Not today. Well, at least I guess we gotta go on assessed value. We can get the real data.
So if you have an assessed value of 300,000, you're looking at $30 for each penny. So if it's three cents, then you're looking at $90.
Because we pay it three times a year. Is that why?
No, three cents. So one cent on a $100,000 house is a $10 increase. So if we increase the tax rate three cents, you're looking at $30 if your house is worth 100 to the taxpayer. So if it's assessed at 300, three pennies, 90.
Oh, I, I know what you're talking about, yes. I needed you to explain this.
That was great. You should be a teacher.
Appreciate it. Cause I didn't get it and I was like, I was right with you.
Specifically, what's my house value then? What does it mean to me?
We need subs. Oh yeah, you can't sub if you're a board member.
I can't sub?
Um, if you're a board member, you can't sub.
I also, I- if we're gonna, I'm okay with like, say, like, let's go with it. I just wanna make sure that we do have a clear vision to present of what it's gonna look like, what it's gonna used for. So I just wanna make sure that we really have that clear vision, you know, when we hand it over to them and say, this is what we want. Even, even if we attach the, or have it hanging somewhere like the project, you know, online.
With the select board dead, right? With the fire station and stuff?
It's a special vote. We, all of a sudden, we like mail-in votes when it comes to a fire station. We don't like in a general election. I think I wanna get the total costs, everything like that. And I think, sounds like everyone's behind it. We're gonna need to have a campaign of positivity. It's, it's 350 kids. It's our staff. It's what we need to be in the future. And, you know, we can talk about numbers all day. The numbers are gonna be what they are. It'll, we can show people how it impacts their taxes, but we need to sell it that this is what we need to do, regardless of what the cost is.
Yeah, I just break it down with that, just cause I'm like, you know, I started taking vitamins and I'm like, oh, a dollar a day. Like, uh, it makes sense to stay healthy, you know? So like, oh yeah, so that's kinda why I approach it.
Oh, sure. That's, that's a great one. We gotta be out there.
Explain things real good.
Positive. This, 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 we need to do it. If we find out we need to do it for years from now, it's gonna be 4 million.
Yeah, absolutely.
The opportunities is, it's gonna open up. It's mind-blowing.
Well, you look at schools around the country that we'd like to be, and I'm just talking campus. We have a great staff. We have a great environment, but we are way dated as far as what you'd wanna walk into and say, hey, this is what I want my kid's elementary school to look like.
You don't like the wood paneling?
I buy a house like this, I rip it out.
Well, that's what sells houses. Schools, schools like this is what sells houses.
And I will say, I mean, this is the third year in a row that I told Pam and Sherry in the office, I'm not giving tours to families unless they have a purchase to sale. Because there was one year, there was a house that I was, six tours of the same, they're just in a bidding war. And I was like, I can't do this all day for families that are just bidding wars off of. It was just too much time. Um, which is a good thing. And Jeff knows, um, working here, that oftentimes things that were cut were those maintenance facilities. Um, and I agree with what you said. We need, just like homeowners should budget for things, whether it be a new roof, flooring, whatever, driveway fixing. Um, those things just haven't been kept up as much as they should have.
And I think that we've kind of course corrected and have been adding money to the capital.
Yes.
Budget. Which has been helpful.
We also need to keep in mind, if we do move forward with this project, there's other costs, the hidden costs that, I mean, you'll you can have an increase in fuel and increase in electricity. Those will all impact budgets. Will you need another custodian? It's more square footage to clean. And all those type of costs that go with having a bigger space. So it's items that will impact the budget. So your two to three cents can now go up a little bit.
Do we have a capital plan? Like a 10-year?
We don't, we have a maintenance plan to do that with Kelly. I think he-
He has a, a one to 10-year maintenance plan that we'll review. And you mean Jeff has helped with these too. And oftentimes those were some of the things cut, but I think we're, we're adding those. And that's one of the things that when we looked at that estimate of 2.3, you know, I think we were thinking, could we do ask for more money and then include some of that abatement with the asbestos and get some of the flooring, um, that marmolium flooring that we've talked about in some of the classrooms.
And we also have a capital improvement budget for when things break.
How much is in that, Louis?
Ninety-seven thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. Rattletown have an article last year to put more into it? I don't think we did. No, that was just wellspringed. So ninety-seven thousand.
Is that including the ten thousand we took out for the estimate? Okay, so it's.
Question for Chris, um, and I thought, I caught wind of something at some meeting, the, was it South Burlington, like. Air quality testing, are they going around every building in Vermont at some point?
The PCB?
Yeah.
We'll wait to get more information on that column. So that is something which they, they talked about a lot since COVID, about the air quality testing. Now Kelly, Sherry and Sarah have done a lot with that. In-house, so we'll wait to see if that's something, another PCB, they have radon. Uh, so we'll see if the air quality moves forward as well.
I mean, is that something we should be concerned about as we're looking to fix or expand, like should we. After we do like worst case, like just get ahead of it and say, Jesus, I mean, we do all this work and all of a sudden they're like, hey, you gotta shut down.
So should we do, right. I mean, I think that would be things to, to discuss. I mean, those are things we talked briefly about Kelly, like. Let us know, and I missed the last me, I apologize, but what does the board feel? Can we do abatement? HVAC, I mean, I don't know, these are just things to, could we roll that into this bond? But we do have.
So Cal, I'm, I'm sorry, sorry.
I, just the, um, uh, Sherry Bethlon forwarded a letter about the indoor air sampling testing for PCBs that did go out to all families. They'll be here on October sixth and seventh. That just went out today around noon time. I thought that's why you were asking.
No, no, I was just thinking out loud, like. Doing a lot of work and then having something say, guess what?
Right, right.
So Cal, I would say, you know, that's, that's kind of the nature of schools, um, that's, I think when you redo budgets. You, you always have to understand that these things may happen, you know, something may occur, and we don't know what each legislative cycle is going to bring. Uh, that's, it's, every year it's interesting, and what, uh, our senators and our representatives feel most important for us, you know. What kind of, what, what saddles us with, so I think it's, I, I would say, don't let that be a deterrent. I think, you know, you had made a passion. And argument for the second floor, and I think, uh, I, I would not wanna see stuff like this, negate that. Um, if we have PCB, you know, or if it's remediation mitigation, there are. Uh, things are placed that the state right now is a hundred percent paid for that, or, you know, we pays for this, so. Um, I, I, you know, that's just something we have to deal with every year, just as we began this discussion a while back on special education. These are just, it, it's what education is, it's we don't know what the, the bills are gonna be, we don't know what the HJ is gonna bring to us. Um, so I think it's just something which, it, this is something the board feels strongly about, uh, moving forward, as you said, Cal, good, great. I think we do that, and then as we, is there's indoor air testing, or if there's something which causes a budgetary concern, we just address that as we go forward.
Well, no, it just popped in my head, it sounds like we're getting tested, it's like to get ahead of it and just get the testing done, so we know if we have an issue and, alright, we're all good. I didn't read the email.
So I will say, Cal, we have been tested at all, all our schools, there were like two schools that have not been tested yet, and. Uh, not gonna, we've had one school who's, any detective levels of PCBs, that's been very minor mitigation for them, so. We're not seeing what some of the other schools or districts are, where they have to shut down a wing or a gym, we've been very fortunate, we hope that will be the case here as well.
Probably had a natural gas stove or something.
So.
Thank you.
Going forward then. It sounds like we need to get some more, um, a, kind of a broader view of the cost, what, what, what the soft cost will be. Um, I, I know we are still trying to figure out whether or not we need sprinklers. And I think we have to start thinking about how we want to present this to the public as well.
I nominate Cal to be head of the committee.
Okay.
Well, speaking of, speaking of soft costs too, I mean, adding on what everything Louis just said too, is they, to show them, hey, to be ahead of the curve, like. This is the, this is the pure cost, but it's also per square foot, it's gonna add more energy costs in, in the coming years, so we can be ahead of everything, to tell them, this is what you're buying.
So is that something that, um, you would work with, with the architects, Louis? Or how does that work?
We could probably just work on that with Kelly and look at what our current square footage is and our current heating costs and. Figure out some sort of metric. It shouldn't be a direct add-on because you are upstairs, so some of your heat is already rising up there, so. But I mean, it will add some costs because, but it shouldn't be multiplied by the same cost per square foot.
So, so now that we have, um, the estimate from, or the drawings from Ed. What else do we need to get a better sense of the cost, besides just talking to Kelly? Do we need to schedule the fire marshal or something to figure out whether or not we, it's, I thought we had, but it, I'm not sure that. We got the official word, whether or not we need sprinklers.
I mean, I, I don't, that's not my expertise, so I would don't, I mean.
So who do we ask for that? Is that Ed that we would go back, do you know, Chris?
Uh, well, I would advise bringing a fire marshal to, to clarify whether I need sprinklers, I, I would be very surprised if you did not. Um, just to go around new construction safety, particularly with students. But I would, before proceed, I, I, I would probably bring in fire inspector, just checking that, I can do some research on that as well, if you'd like.
When's the last time you talked to Ed?
Um, just since he wrote, I, a month ago.
So in, in between there, he talked to my neighbor who's the old fire marshal, so I think Ed's in the right direction now of what he needs to know. They had a conversation after he talked to me, after I missed the meeting, but, so I know he's got more resources. I don't know, there, I haven't talked to him.
So should I reach back out to Ed and have him talk to you, Chris, or do you wanna do that, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, if you, it doesn't matter, you can reach out and have him direct to me, or I can reach out, whichever is easiest for you.
Well, I guess if you're the one that's going to be the one that, that he needs to talk to anyway.
I will reach out to him, that's fine.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So I guess the goal is to have a better cost estimate for next meeting, correct? And so between Louis, Kelly, Chris and Ed. Right, okay. Thank you. Well, to get the inform. Do we need, I mean, I guess it doesn't, November would probably be okay. Well, the goal is that we wanna get this.
We need to vote by January as to what you're putting on the ballot.
Okay.
So November will probably be fine. But maybe just an update in October, what, what you've found so far? Would that be okay?
Yeah, I don't think we need to keep things, I'd like to be as, as, by November as thorough as possible to what the estimates we're getting, it seems like. It's been four or five months of the same, like, kinda sorta habit, like. I have no problem leaving it to November, but I don't wanna have the same conversation, they're like, kinda sorta miss some of the numbers, like, let's take two months, do the diligence, and get a, something firm to stand on. So we're not just like, oh, we still need, you know, we still have some time between there and January, but, you know, let's, let's, let's push the architects, like, let's get, get us a cost. Kind of what you do.
And I, I can also mention in the circle article that we are leaning towards doing it, and if you have any. Um, comments or concerns, feel free to come to the October, November meeting, where we'll be looking more at the costs and figuring out whether or not we're going to proceed or not. Um, alright, great, moving on, um, the seventh, eighth grade class trip policy, it, Chris, I didn't see anything in the. Bucket.
So at the la- at the last meeting, we had discussed, uh, cause Sarah was out there, uh, whether or not there would be a, we should have a workshop discussion with Sarah Mike, which way around. The last line, uh, last theme, we had put that the eighth grade trip would be funded solely by fundraisers, and I know that was a bit of a sticking point, and so. We, uh, we thought it'd be good, um, for the board and for Sarah Mike, just to briefly discuss. How the eighth grade trip should be funded, and then we could easily change that to reflect that, that last line, you could bet, uh, for the board in October.
So, does there need to be within that policy discussion about eighth grade trip? Like, I'm just curious, why is there, why is it including the DC trip in the policy, since we're just covering the seventh grade Chinchacook trip?
I think originally we started talking about, yeah, I mean, that is one option. We, we had talked about how. Um, it was really difficult to fundraise two years in a row.
Yes.
So we picked, we will pay for seventh, and we will let them fundraise for eighth.
Yep.
I think since that discussion, we talked a little bit about equity and trying to see if maybe we could be more creative with the budget to. See what we could do from that angle, so I think when it said solely by fundraising or something like that, I think that's why we were like, well, maybe we don't want it only fundraising.
My recommendation would just be exclude the eighth grade trip from the policy, but I'm not, that's up to you guys. I was just like, why are we talking about the eighth grade trip? Because I, we understand the decision that it's a law on parents to, to fund two trips back-to-back. And, um, we have a policy that any overnight trip needs to be approved by the board, um, before November fifteenth. So, kinda, I have a kind of a well-oiled machine at this point with DC, their, their fundraising, their, I don't have numbers with me right now, but. Um, they've been working hard, so their trip is a go for eighth grade, and I've told that to them, I meet with the parents and I say, and I will say. The board has funded seventh grade, but if you want this trip to go, all kids need to be able to go attend. So we know that we need to pay for those kids that can't afford first, and then anything raised beyond that money goes to offset the cost for everyone else.
Cause you were, I, I feel like you had spoken up last meeting a little bit about it.
How do you know which kids can afford it and which kids are pulling? From other, do you know that from other, I just, I really. Our population has changed. Circumstances has changed for people, and I really worry about, will parents say, my kid can't. We couldn't afford this, do you know what I'm saying? So, I just, I don't, I.
And I think it go, I have parents that question, some parents that receive, you know, and some parents get upset that if you're receiving money, you have to participate. And I just say, this isn't the kid's fault, you know, I can't afford, I can't force family members and kids to participate in fundraising. Um, those are great questions, Abby, I don't have answers, so what I do is just a survey. Sherry looks at the survey and says, Sarah, this is how much money we need to make.
Yeah, but I could also see parents not being honest on the survey, and they will take from this pot, from this pot, that, from this pot.
Right.
To pay for their kid to go to experience this.
Yeah.
I just, I, I feel like it is. A lot of money to ask people to, if we're not solely fundraising for every kid. I feel like it's a lot to ask somebody to pay out of pocket to go.
Mm-hmm.
I really do, like, I, you know, I mean, I mean, think about kids who have multiple kids in the grade, or, I mean. We do, we have some kids that have two kids that are in, in the seventh or eighth grade, like.
Twins, I, I think, uh.
Well, it's not, I don't know if it's twins, I wasn't gonna put it out there, but you know what I'm saying, like, I think it's a lot, and I just, I really want to be mindful of. Are, we have a huge population shift, we do, and I, I just.
So, um, I th- I thought one thing with the solely part was whether or not that would kinda handcuff the board at all, I don't know about that, if that was the topic, but. Um, but also just something to chew on as, as a group, um, but I was also thinking like, so. We decided to pay for the seventh grade so that they didn't have to fundraise two years in a row. But then it also kinda, it doesn't give them an opportunity to start fundraising early, almost, because the eighth grade is doing it. Currently, so I kind of encourage the, almost that middle school community to start to work together in some way, right? Like if, if our, if the sixth graders and seventh grader, if, they collectively started working towards this. Trip, right? Um, then the seventh graders or could, they could start fundraising earlier because they're not stepping on the toes of their current eighth graders, so. Um, I think it really, it would really build like a middle school community, if it's like, hey, you know. Uh, and I don't know how that looks, you know, so that's why I'm bringing it up in this forum, but, you know, cause look, look at our seventh grade, like. You know, they're, this, this trip they're on as of today is taken care of, you know, but the eighth graders are. Currently trying to fundraise for, uh, this trip, and, but this, and the seventh graders are kinda just holding their hands, because.
I think it's a balanced term, I mean, I think, you know, the feedback I got years ago was that there's too many fundraisers. And that also puts pressure on families for a dollar for hot day, bring in a canned food item. So when we, we used to do a team approach, and they're actually, there was a board policy that changed that boards have to approve fundraising. Which then made it really challenging, so now it's just they have to be approved by me as the principal, and so I just kinda look at, you know. Student council, we're not gonna do that because we have this going on this week, because, like, just like Abby said, we just need to be mindful of the number of fundraisers that we're doing.
Well, I think I, I, I'm, I see what you're saying, take the solely, the fundraising out, I get it, cause that does handcuff us. What, my, the statement that I'm like, ugh, about is the fact of, we will pay for this kid to go. But you have to pay your whole, whole way, and I, I worry about the message that that sends, so. To, for all of, everybody involved, and I feel like we just need to look at that, how do we become. I just feel like, it's a, that's a lot of money to ask parents.
And it's going up, I mean, I think.
It's going up, yeah.
It's, I've been six, seven times, and it was four hundred and fifty dollars, and now it's almost eight hundred dollars.
I'm a hundred percent for the field trip, I mean, Lisa still talks about the field trip that they went on, her three, we talked about it last night, we went on this. They started in fifth grade, he went somewhere for fifth grade somewhere, or sixth, seventh and eighth here, you know, and I get it. But times have changed, circumstances of kids have changed, Rattletown's community has changed, and I feel like we just have to make sure we encompass. All of the kids, and somehow, so that, it just, I, I don't know, I. I don't, I don't know how to fix the problem, but.
I don't either, and I think a lot goes behind the scene, you know, Tracy Sabaka, family school coordinator, has been, you know, messaging me this evening, she has. Shopped, and our, our teachers have all come together to donate all sorts of items for our kids to go to Chinchacook. We didn't ask, we just like, who needs what, what do you need? And the number of things, um, is that our staff have brought in for our kids without question is incredible. But it's not just the cost, like, we're blessed and thankful for the board providing money for this trip to Chinchacook, but there are also things that needed to go on the trip that kids don't have. So just like with DC, they still need to pay for dinner on the way down, lunch on the way down, dinner on the way home, any spending money, we just do that.
And so you pay your way, so then.
You do that through the principal's line, or?
Sometimes we do through the principal's line, but sometime, I just do it. We, we just do it, we take care of our kids. So we do have money in the principal's line for some of that, and then teachers and chaperones, we just.
So how do we do it without it being such a burden on some parent, do you know what I'm saying? Because it does, like, some parents are like, well, here I'm doing all this fundraising for five kids to go, it's not benefiting my chi- child. I, I think that sometimes puts a.
Mm-hmm.
So people do get upset.
Mm-hmm.
So, so they, they're paying full price, and they are doing, you know, three of the fundraisers. And there's a same, you know, half of the parents at all the fundraisers, and then half the parents are not. And usually the ones that are at the fundraiser are trying to make sure their kids go and are paying full price too.
Yes.
And then chaperones also have to pay full price, even though we need the chaperones to go.
So.
But who's paying for?
So, chaperones pay full price for their, their way.
I get that.
Students pay full price for their way.
And then they stay.
And then some students say, their parents will say that they cannot pay, and the grade as a whole. and the grade as a whole must fundraise to cover all the students that the parents said, we need help for assistance. And I think what Abby is saying is that some parents will say they don't need assistance even though it's very challenging for them to cover.
And I think it goes the opposite way. Some parents have also, you know, they've, I've had parents complain, like, so-and-so said that they're not, they need financial assistance and they don't, but they're not fundraising, they're not paying for it. I don't know if that's true. I don't ask. It's just fill out this form, and Sherry says, Sarah, you gotta raise this amount of money.
And that's the thing, like, I, how do we?
It's stressful every year.
It is super stressful, s- super stressful for the parents, it's super stressful for the kids, I think. So, how do we as a board look at that and help?
I like where Tim was going. I mean, I hate fundraising. I don't think we should do it in general. Um, plus, it's a waste of money, um, cause there's margin in whatever product you're selling, blah, 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 blah. Um, and most of the times, the parents are buying crap anyways with their friends, um, so I'd rather just write a check. But I'm in a different situation, but if you take a community approach where the PTA is gonna fund, have five events that's going to the pot versus each class is responsible, then it creates infighting, then it creates those of the kids that don't have money and we're raising for them, where it's a school-wide, like, all of our fundraisers is going towards school trips. And I'm, I'm not even against the policy. It's like, this is a bit extreme, but like, we shouldn't have a school trip where someone can't go because they don't have the money. That's, that's not public education. That's not experienced to me.
Well, that's the thing, but then what happens is.
And if they're too, eh, eh, too shy to fill out a form that, and then they're like, oh, they're pulling their kid out of school. That's ridiculous.
We have a kid who can't go, can't, but we're making other people fundraise for them. So, it puts, sometimes it puts just a burden on, like, the other families too, to fundraise, to go every Saturday. So, how do we alleviate that stress?
I like your idea of, I think that the way the trips have always worked is that there's some sort of issue with some student that needs school help, and through the principal administration, if somebody, somebody, there's issues where things need to be taken care of, and they find a way to get it done. You know, for us to pay for, uh, Chinchikook and give them two years to work on their fundraising for the eighth grade trip is, in my mind, pretty, pretty helpful for them to be able to.
But they still don't start until eighth grade year. They don't start until their, the spring, I think, spring, you have a meeting spring of April of their seventh grade year, so then.
Some teachers do a little bit. I think Ms. Turner sells fudge. I let her do that, and that just goes into account now a lot, but you got a little bit of a cushion going into eighth grade, because I just try to be mindful of when the PTO has a candle sale or whatever, our student council's doing a food drive, but I just try to balance, what are we asking families to bring in?
That's just the way it's, that's the way it's always been.
Yeah, it is what the, it's always been that way, but our population is changing. I mean, we gotta take in consideration too, like, we have a very high population that are in, that are homeless right now. We have, you know, we have to take in consideration the population that is coming to us now. It's not like twenty years ago.
Right. That's not a huge amount of people.
It is.
It is a huge amount of people.
Katie, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, relying on your team teachers is also a really cold communication point for a lot of people. I think, just hearing you guys talk about, um, families who may not know those resources are available. I think you have, you know, one teacher for every time to twelve kids, and utilizing that resource is really important. Cause, I mean, Sarah and Mike can help with that piece, but we really know our families and everything well. So, I just wanted to put it back with us too, because I think that's important.
Thanks. Um, I think also with our strategic plan, we've been looking at, um, trying to, um, look at life, life experiences and, uh, other opportunities such as lifetime sports and things like that, trying, um, so, I'm trying to see how that ties into this is important too. Um, but it, so, I, I kind of hear from everyone that we wanna take away the solely by fundraising. Um, I think we can go forward with the seventh grade, which you, um, had proposed last time, and we all agreed to. So, I think we can probably finalize that policy at least and continue the discussion of how to creatively pay for our field trips going forward. Um, Chris, anything else to add before we move on?
So, what is the language that you would like to use, Tina?
Um, I, I don't have a copy of it in front of me. I'm sorry.
No, just instead of the language, take it out solely by fundraisers, what do you wanna replace that with?
I, 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 I think just take out the whole eighth grade, um.
So, just make this the seventh grade trip policy?
Yes. And that the board will pay, be paying it, which is what, um, Jeff had proposed last time that we would at least pay for the seventh grade, and the board all agreed. Um, so, I think if we have that policy in place for next um, meeting, or the meeting after, it doesn't matter at this point. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
I'll be ready for October.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. All right, next, master scheduling discussion.
Sarah, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, ballpark, what's the budget for those three trips?
Sixth grade?
We have sixth grade trip?
No, sorry, I was like, where are we going?
Well, they have a class, like, not an overnight. They, they do a class trip of some sort, right?
Or what's?
Yes, they do a class trip. Um, I don't have how much DC costs. It's se- let's just say eight hundred dollars per student.
I mean, like, total numbers.
So, forty thousand or less.
Or enrollment number.
Plus chaperones.
It's only eight hundred dollars. Hang on, let me just, let me, can you, I'll find it.
At some point, just get me, I have an idea.
So, moving on to the master scheduling discussion. So, I think, um, Mike and Sarah, if you wanna walk us through?
Um, go ahead.
Okay, or do you, just wanna take questions?
I was looking at, um, trying to look at DC stuff. I apologize to see where, put my fingers on that. Um, I'll just, I, um, just, uh, an overview real quick. So, um, last year, there was a scheduling, uh, committee. We met with, um, Lindsay Ryder, our, uh, literacy coordinator for the district, and there was, um, a directive that we increase, uh, do, move forward with the literacy block and increase our content times specifically for math and ELA, which we did. Within that, we had to pull from some specials. So, instead of having band five days a week, that moved down to three. Um, so, some tech ed was taken away, some Spanish was reduced, um, in order to expand those classes. Uh, some other changes without even looking, uh, was we, I called it brunch. We did, we took out the brunch, uh, lunch block. There was a ten thirty lunch that we took out, um. Yeah, so the, the graph kind of highlights some changes there.
Um, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
In the pre-K, um, they went from two times a week in Spanish to one time a week. Is it still the twenty minutes?
They usually do twenty minutes back to back within specials for pre-K. Yep.
So, is it, it's, it's half the amount of time?
Correct.
That they have.
Question, do we do any testing or comprehension for Spanish any way along the way?
Uh, I asked Teresa Sunderland to come to the next board meeting, cause, um, Tina said she wanted to put specifically Spanish on the agenda. So, if there are specific Spanish questions, I would like to hold off on those to, um, either include Lisa Madison and Teresa Sunderland, or at least Teresa, if that's okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we had, um, asked for, um, an update as to how Rutland Town students have fared going into Spanish two, um, how many twos to go into Spanish one, and how many twos not to do a language. And because it's too early in the year, they couldn't get back to us. And then additionally, it sounds like, um, they're, they're worried about FERPA. Um, so, they suggested some other ways to, um, get the information. So, we'll have that for next time, best we can. It's, it's like HIPAA, but in the education world. Um, so, just to highlight that, the, one of the reasons that we asked for that information is, um, because in the upper grades, Spanish changed as well, correct? Can you just highlight for everybody?
Yep, so, we had Spanish, um, was, one week would be two times a week, and then one week it would be three times a week. Um, and that had moved, uh, this year, we have Spanish, um, one time a week for fifth grade, and then twice a week for sixth through eighth grade. So, I did speak to Teresa Sunderland, um, who had spoken to the Spanish teacher, and I know not all of our kids go to Rutland, uh, but to the Rutland High School Spanish teacher, and she had said that they're doing one less chapter, um, starting for Spanish two. So, that puts us in a good spot. So, she said, even with the reduction of days of Spanish, she's like, I can get the kids there, cause it's one whole less chapter.
And I think also what's important, um, to have for the Spanish discussion is, like, what are, what is the goal when kids leave here? Like, do we want them fluent? Do we want them to be ready for Spanish two? Um, and I think that that's a question also to consider. Um, like, like, what's, what is our end goal? If they're having Spanish from pre-K to eight, like, what is our expectation that our kids are gonna be able to do? You know, and.
Also, what, what, what are we doing? How impactful is it?
Yeah.
Twenty minutes a week, um, I mean, the immersion schools work, um, I'd like to, like to have that.
Those are with their three and four-year-olds, yeah. Those are with just the three and four-year-olds, so our youngest kids have specials for twenty minutes at a time.
So, I think we'll have more of that Spanish discussion next time, but those are just some things to think about. Um, and then the other big change that I noticed is that there is no dedicated tech ed in sixth grade. Um, but students that are not in band get it, or in independent study, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Yeah, or chorus, either band chorus or the independent study. And within independent study, they would have that tech ed option.
And that's the same for seventh grade?
Correct.
But then eighth grade definitely gets tech ed.
Once a week.
Once a week, all year long.
Correct.
And that used to be they only got tech ed half the year?
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
So, they're actually getting twice as much in eighth grade? As what they used to get.
For half the year, and then tech ed for half the year in eighth grade.
But now they get it all year.
Seventh and eighth, they do independent study three times per week. Eighth grade gets tech ed one day per week.
All year long.
Seventh isn't getting tech ed?
Seventh and eighth grade get independent study, which they can do, like, right now, they're changing it every three weeks. So, uh, our art teacher is doing murals, uh, library media specialist is doing coding, and then Mike Rowe, um, doing tech ed. He's doing the daily townie.
But that's only students that are not in chorus or band.
You have to choose band or tech ed.
You have to choose band, chorus, or independent study.
But in eighth grade, they get tech ed no matter what.
Correct.
And how much did they get in eighth grade last year is my question.
Eighth grade got half a year tech ed, half a year art. This year, eighth grade get tech ed one day a week.
So, they're getting the same, between seventh and eighth grade, whether they're, they choose independent study or not, they're still getting the same amount as they used to if you clump them together. Because they only had a half a year in seventh grade and a half a year in eighth grade, right?
How many days a week did they have tech ed though last year?
They had it, they had it once a week, but only half the year in seventh grade. So, really, sixth grade is the only one that doesn't get any tech ed whatsoever. Is that correct? Or they get it in the independent study too?
No, cause I have here for my notes, sorry, I have too many things going. Seventh and eighth grade, independent study three times a week.
But not sixth grade?
I gotta check.
Okay. It says here, no dedicated tech ed, but it doesn't say that they get it.
Right, eighth, so eighth grade is the one that has that dedicated tech ed now. Seven, and they also have that, that band chorus or independent study option, and that tech ed being within that independent study. And then seven, it's seventh grade that doesn't have that dedicated tech ed time, but has it within those choices.
Katie McDougall, thank you. She's messaging me. So, tech ed was every other day for a full year for eighth last year, but I believe it was two days a week or three days a week, Katie. And then seventh never had tech ed, they had health.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
Good job with the schedule.
And I think, you know, we were given a directive of, we gotta increase some of our content time, and, and that was a need and an ask and what's best. And within that, we can't offer everything. We gotta, and some kids need to choose. You know, I, Mike and I, and I talked to, uh, Superintendent Sell about it today too. When kids go to high school, you may need to pick and choose, can I take digital art or do I need to take this biology class? You know, you gotta, um, so we, our, our job is to expose these kids to a variety of offerings, but sometimes they have to choose, you know, between this class or that class.
Does anyone have any other thoughts before we move on?
See the dedicated recess back in too.
For sixth grade. We included sixth grade recess, not seventh and eighth, but our, um, teacher, you know, we remind, the, the, our middle school teachers are, all our teachers are awesome, but they, um, getting the kids outside to eat, um, and getting them outside just, it, it's best practice. Kids aren't sitting in a chair, you know, for sixty minutes at a time. It just doesn't happen. So, getting them outside.
How did, um, how are the teachers and students adjusting to the longer core class time? Has it been a smooth transition from last year? Are they feeling like the kids are getting ang- antsy to get out or?
I haven't, I haven't asked. I haven't heard, and usually the kids are the first to tell me and complain. Um, we're just the first few weeks into school. Uh, so I think there's been a lot of that team building, you know, the first six weeks is about. So, I think, ask me in a couple of weeks and I'll have some more honest feedback from you. I mean, we're already fast push testing, you know, we're, we're.
Do they have like a stretch, I mean, not to get too deep into this, but is there, do they have like, uh, any sort of break during that seventy-five minutes or?
Oh, I, I mean, absolutely. Our, and teachers do that naturally, and it can just be based upon what kids are, are acting like. I mean, I've set, seen kids with the five minutes in the class, like, we're gonna go for a stretch break outside, we need ten minutes to play, whatever, and then let's go back in. I think it, it depends on the day, if they were testing. Right, the content, um, but our teachers know their kids, so.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
All right, next up, lifetime sports. Um, we did have a meeting tonight. And Colin, would you like to?
Sure.
I didn't realize I was the chair of committee.
You're not, you just.
Well, no, it's, it's the two of you that are actually.
Would you like me to talk?
Please. It was nice. We had some, uh, handful of community members and parents here, so it was good. I think it's definitely on their minds. Certainly, it's a lot of the buzz that I get from parents. Don't really ask me about anything but that, so.
Yeah, we, um, we had great conversations. We talked about, um, I think Sarah was able to secure, um, fifty spots right now at PICO, right?
I, I didn't. I'm pretty sure that was Colin. It's like Boys and Girls Club. Thank you very much.
Sarah just got the email. Um, so, you know, I think looking at, and just getting, um, expertise from, um, people from our community and what they have experienced in other schools, um, you know, we're not trying to reinvent wheel. This is around a lot of schools in Vermont, um, really just honing in on what our purpose for the, um, lifetime sports are, um, you know? Just getting kids out into the community, getting them, um, engaged with community members, getting them, um, access to things that, um, sports and opportunities that we have, um, within, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes of our, our school. You know, we still really need to talk about, you know, what grade levels we wanna hone in on if we're doing the whole school. Make those kind of, um, those decisions. If we can only get fifty kids up on the mountain, what are we gonna do with the rest of the stu- school or the students? We do have a lot of snowshoe skiing stuff here already at the school, um, ice skates.
Cross-country skiing, not regular, not downhill.
Yeah, cross-country skis, um, snowshoes, ice skates right here, and, um, how do we use, utilize the equipment we already have?
I'd also like to recognize Keith Schneider attended the meeting and was definitely pro for it. Um, mentioned that he'd be happy to lead, uh, a site here so that we didn't have to worry about busing some students. Um, it, it made it a little easier and cheaper that way, and he would look at doing personal fitness or, um, winter hiking, or snowshoeing, or cross-country skiing depending, or ice skating depending on the weather and interest of the student. um, winter hiking or snowshoeing or cross-country skiing depending, or ice skating depending on the weather and interest of the student.
Yeah, Mike Rowe is just, he said the, he suggested just being somewhat limited in scope, just so the launch is, you know, good and, um, and then, uh, and he suggested like Friday afternoons, something like that. I don't know what that means for scheduling and-
Well, um, Thursday afternoons was when Pyco was available. So it sounds like, I think from the meeting that it, that we need to figure out costs and there's still a lot to figure out in the next few weeks. So maybe pushing more of this information, once you have that, more of this discussion to when you have that information for next meeting would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like, and I have to defer to Sarah, like, if we're gonna do it and we're incorporating skiing, Thursday's our day. I, I would not recommend we break it up and have some kids do stuff here. So that Thursday afternoon time slot. Again, deferring to, I think we should do at least five, but possibly six weeks. And then build out a cost structure.
And then present that to the board next meeting.
Yep. Yes.
And a question about using Esser funds for that. Is that, um, were you thinking about using the little pocket you got recently?
I have no idea how much this is gonna cost, so I think that's the first thing. What do you want? How much is it gonna cost? And mine is seven fifty, because we're already using that for the trip.
I've, I've been involved with the Pulteney program for the last ten years. It's, um, familiar program. Costs are pretty basic. It's the Pyco's cost. And they provide everything and their cost has changed over the last few years. Um, I think just recently it was about, I think it was about a hundred and fifteen dollars per student.
One twenty-nine.
Okay, and that included, that includes the six-week program, the equipment, the lessons. And it also includes a pass that they can use throughout the whole season. And the only other cost is really transportation, getting them there for the six weeks. So one bus, um, which shouldn't cost too much, because you're pretty close to Killington, so it's one bus for six weeks.
Do they go to Killington or Pyco?
Pyco.
Okay.
Pyco.
Yeah. Um, so where, are there Esser funds that we can use this year or not?
Um, I, I would say if, there's definitely Sarah's enrichment funds that she could use. As far as, other than that, I would need to discuss it, because there are other program, other schools that do this program and, um, I think if we start paying for one school, we have to do that for all schools.
So I think that we, at least I got the feeling that we wanted to look at this for the budget for next year. But may, need help this year getting it off the ground, I think is what we were thinking, correct?
You saying fiscal year or calendar year?
For the budget for next year. We would want to include that on our-
Yes.
You're looking for it to pay the full cost, no parent cost?
At, at wish list, yes. Um, but then seeing what we, what we would need this year to make it happen so that we could start.
So, yeah.
So when the other schools, there, there is a cost to parents to, to participate.
Honestly, I don't even think, I mean, I mean, would parents be participating or is this just a school?
No.
No, they can't pay like fifteen bucks.
It costs those students. So I mean, they usually-
That's why I was like, don't do that.
Come on, Louis.
Right, so, okay.
I just started sweating over here.
Or back up the tree. Next year, we have different options. So if we're talking about next fiscal year as well as next ski season, we have more options than fifty slots. This year, we have a time limit of December twentieth. Again, a lot of schools are doing this. We're late to the game, so we have a one slot available. So the committee, as well as I'm looking for some of your guidance, we have to, we have to land on not eleven, but four lifetime sports, I think would be appropriate this year. Isolating some, some smaller choices for set school, uh, class ages. So I mean, we're not looking at, I think it's appropriate to say pre K, K is not in the pool to be going skiing. It's, it's a waste of resources and it's a cluster at, at that end. And we have fifty, we have fifty slots for the full package and instruction. But we're not limited to, we have to do some negotiation with Pyco to say, we may have fifty or a hundred kids that don't need instruction, but we want passes. Or they have passes, they just need to ski. So the program, to be successful, I think we should target four sports this year on a Thursday afternoon and between me, Abby and Sarah, in the next four weeks to our next meeting can come up with a pretty close budget. But it involves reaching out to Giorgietti and potentially, and I, this is me where I think we should be going, skiing, skating, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, and then potentially tennis or Bronson Fitness or some sort of workout, potentially even working with the Rutland Rec Center or the new whatever St. Joe's.
So I can tell you-
Bowling training.
Bowling.
That's what I said, my wife's like, it's bowling.
Sir Patterson was asking.
I think we did that growing up.
So I can tell you, um, that we are using George, we are possibly using Giorgietti from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty. And I have the curling club, Rutland Curling Club, that comes and does lessons for our kids. I could see if they would extend their day on Thursday already and we could do curling lessons for the students at Giorgietti and use possibly Spartan Arena for ice skating. Do you know what I'm saying? We can look at both of those, but, um, they're already there. The ice is already gonna be prepped for curling.
Well, you guys can talk about that at the committee.
But I think targeting a handful of sports, so we could have a successful program. Again, probably year one, having some classes have their lifetime sports at Rutland Town, where we can incorporate the gym teachers where, because we're really looking to utilize a mountaintop, Pyco and then a Giorgietti type thing where we'd have some bussing and constraints and, and sizes where we could do a lot of lifetime activities here and really nail down the cost.
So if you could figure that out for next meeting and then I guess maybe loop Louis in on the meeting as well and figure out if you have Esser availability or not, uh, in addition to the enrichment.
Cause it's not gonna be astronomical.
But we just need to know what it is.
Fifty kids is sixty-four hundred fifty dollars at Pyco. But that's only fifty of our three fifty, so. But a- as we go to Giorgietti, as we go to mountaintop, those prices are nowhere near a hundred and twenty-nine per, per student, so.
Maybe just have to have something for the kids that don't like outside, outdoor activities. Like bowling or something.
But I also wanna try to pull them out of their comfort zone.
Are we gonna allow, we can talk about that.
Alcohol? No.
No.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Are we? Okay, so we'll make sure we talk about that next time.
Maybe even our new town resident will donate some of that mountaintop stuff, if he's listening. Continue.
Sure he is. I bet he is.
All right, up next is the, um, the Rutland Town School Property and Land Discussion and in the online bucket, I scanned some of the, or I had, I scanned incentive for steam, some of the, um, plans that I found at the town clerk's office, um, regarding the land that we actually own and some of the deeds and information regarding it. So in, a few months ago, we, um, when there was discussion about the dog park, we, um, talked a little bit about what we wanted to do with the land. Um, and one of the things that was brought up was selling it at fair, fair market value to the town. And so I included this information so you could see how the land was permitted, um, where exactly the land is. And just to spark discussion about what your thoughts were at this point. Now that the dog park discussion is kinda quieted down and seeing this as a potential, um, way to offset the cost of the second floor. Chris, did I miss anything that we had talked about?
Nope, you touched on everything, Tina.
Okay. I, I mean, in light of time, I'm okay if we wanna digest this information and, um, think about it over the month and then talk about it next month when we have, or even November, when we have a little bit more information about what the second floor will cost.
Which piece?
So it's this piece that has like the little funny square-ish over here and includes the softball field.
Oh, that's a big piece.
Yeah. That's the Rutland Town property, Rutland Town School property.
Were you on that nice softball field up there?
We did.
Cool. Assuming we're only entertaining selling it to the town.
That would be what we would. We, we would hope that they would consider, um, because it would help the taxpayers if they gave us fair ma- market value, it would offset the cost of the second floor, which would
It's a cheap way to fund it. If we're gonna pay for it anyways, I'm for it.
So.
I think that's a good discussion point about how we fund education and how your property taxes work and how if town taxpayers pay for it this way, it's actually cheaper than paying it through the school budget. Even though it's the same dollar amount. This is, if we wanna do the project and we're gonna vote yes, paying a portion of it through a land purchase is cheaper. Less on that tax, those cents on the dollar.
Do you have any thoughts, Louis?
Um, I don't have the document in front of me. I'm not sure what the cost is, like, what's the fair market value?
I don't know. Would that be-
It's cheaper to raise, because you're now getting money from the state, it's cheaper to raise a dollar through the school budget than it is through the town budget.
First down?
It's that. It's cheap, cheaper to raise a dollar in, but through school taxes than it is to raise a dollar through town taxes.
Rutland Town it is.
So it would actually be-
Take that back then. I thought we were in a different situation.
You're no longer ascending town.
Okay.
As of last year.
All right, so.
Or gold town is some people-
Yeah, yeah, I didn't realize that. So take back what I just said. Cause it's inaccurate.
Did you wanna-
It could shift back, but it, um, I think it was, he receives, uh, I provided the numbers of budget last year. I think it was a few hundred thousand or something like that.
Okay.
I, I can pull that out for the budget discussion.
So with that in mind, I mean, it doesn't make fiscal sense to do it, um, as a taxpayer.
Yeah.
So we can keep that for a later date. If we do shift back, if the demographics or the shift back to ascending town, then, then we can bring that to the table.
That works for me. Everyone else, okay?
One question. Do we maintain that or do they maintain it?
So they, they have been maintaining it. Yeah. So.
For liability purposes, if it's gonna be a dog park, it'd probably be better if it was owned by the town and not the school.
It's not going to be a dog park, yeah. At least not right now. Okay, moving on. Director's orders. I need a motion to accept those.
I will make a motion to Abby.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from August fifteenth. I need a motion to accept those. Thank you, Abby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Uh, thanks, Tina. I know it's getting late, uh, so if you'd like, I could just answer any questions you may have. A lot of this is informative. Um, like, yeah, instead of starting school year, brought the students, staff back. I just want, it's great to see everybody back at school and I just want to quickly say thank you to Sarah, Mike, brought staff, Kelly, and the custodians. I know it was a bit of a, kind of a carousel, custodians during the course of the past year, but I do wanna thank them all for their hard work in getting the school up and ready to go. Um, you know, I've been over there three or four times. And, uh, the building looks great, uh, you know, things, you know, classes are great. I'm very happy with, with, with C, so. A couple of items in here, I guess I could touch upon, just about the fast bridge. I know Sarah may talk about that. I do believe they let it was sent out to Rutland Town families, highlighting the shift away from math to fast bridge. Uh, and I just wanna reiterate that, uh, with any sort of intervention or MTSS is meant to meet, uh, students across the spectrum. A lot of times you'll hear the term intervention and we, we default to students, uh, playing catch-up. Uh, but really interventions are also used for students who will need to be, uh, further challenged or provide other uh, avenues or, uh, opportunities for enrichments. So as we look at MTSS, we look at, um, you know, fast bridge and these sorts of assessments, it really allows our teachers to just get a better understanding of where our students are at. Now best to maximize the learning potential. And I think that's where, uh, fast bridges allows people to be more responsive. It's a little bit shorter assessment, allows us to work, work through this. Uh, so we'll continue to, to monitor that, but we'll also be able to monitor growth as well, over the course of students. Cause that is, that's what we expect to see is growth in every one of our students over the course of this year, in areas of math and literacy. Any other questions on this? No, I said I wasn't gonna talk, but I talked, but, um.
I, I appreciate you highlighting that, Chris. Thank you.
And I know Sarah, just real quick, I, Sarah touched upon the, this in, in college, uh, when you hear about the airside, when the, it's PCB testing will take place October sixth and seventh. And Sarah, I'm sure you were gonna highlight this, we're talking about the difference where it worked, but, uh, we, we probably will not have results until around Thanksgiving time there. So I know that was tested to go. Uh, we probably will start receiving phone calls the following week, you know, Mike and Sarah about, can we get results, do we get results? Typically, they're about four to five weeks out, uh, at best. So as soon as we have that, we will communicate to the, both the board and the community and the staff, in terms of what the findings were and what, uh, adjustments need to be made, if any. Any questions?
No, thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks.
All right, principal's report.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna summarize because I know we're pretty, it, it is late. Um, so fast bridge assessments have begun. Teachers are working on those first six weeks of school. As, uh, you saw Mrs. Alderman and Mrs. Torrey highlight, it's really just those building routines, expectations and relationships. Um, we had a good in-service EST committee that Mike is chairing is up and running. Uh, they had their second meeting this morning. Uh, shout out to Katie McDougall. She's organizing. We talked about this, big buddies and little buddies, so I'm so glad to have that back again. Um, and seventh and eighth grade student council elections took place today. Um, so we're gonna announce the winners of a student council when everybody gets back from Chinja Cooks. So we'll announce those on Monday. But, uh, you may see some posters around, kids did speeches. Mike and I watched them last night. It's great. Um, and so Katie, uh, McDougall and Bailey Sanders, there's, uh, a request for them to do the student council for a stipend. They're running that during their lunchtime. They're also gonna have TA ambassadors again this year and what they've decided to do is have more committee involvement. So one may be community service, one may lead school dances, uh, to give more of a focus this year, which is great. I mentioned EST. I won't highlight physical plant. Those are updates from Mr. Treya. Uh, Boys and Girls Club started on Monday. We have eighteen students signed up, which is great. Chinja Cooks, our seventh graders le- left today. Posted a picture of them in the gym before they left this evening. Uh, our middle school open house is on the twentieth. I mentioned briefly, uh, a big thanks to Mr. Lamar and Principal Macklemore for organizing the, uh, math midway to go. Um, all of our students K through eight will be attending and it's being paid through Esser funds, so it's free, but the transportation does come with a seven hundred and fifty dollar cost. Uh, our athletic teams are underway, so Mike and I were able to go out and watch some of the games last night, which is great. Um, one challenge, uh, that we are seeing is there's been a drastic increase, um, in our home, homeless population since the start of school. So a huge thanks to Bill Basic and Tiffany Patterson. They've been extremely supportive, uh, but significant needs, um, which has been a huge impact on all resources. Um, I've met with a middle school team. Mike and I met with them last week. Um, and I just, I usually don't get emotional, takes a lot. Uh, this community and group of teachers have been incredible. So, um, you know, without asking, teachers came in with supplies for our kids with their own money, with their own belongings for the seventh grade trip. Um, clothes for kids, shoes, snacks. Uh, I had a parent, Superintendent Sell was here visiting. Parents saw me at drop-off, talking with a family that was in need. And half hour later emailed me and said I used to be a hairdresser. If I can help cut hairs, kids' hair with parent permission, let me know what I can do. Uh, later that afternoon, I had a parent that dropped off three bags of clothes for kids, no question. Um, so just a huge thanks to our community, um, for, it's all about these kids. Um, so we're welcoming our kids with open arms. This is the best place for them to be. Uh, but it's definitely a strain. Um, I mentioned earlier, we are desperately seeking substitutes. We have six unfilled absences yesterday. We have six unfilled today. Tomorrow, pardon me, uh, so six and six, basically. We are in need of a full-time custodian. We're- We are in need of a full-time custodian. We're still in need of a special educator and we are in need of two special education pair educators. Our enrollment continues to be strong, so I've listed the numbers there and we do have some tuition kits, the most tuition kits that we've had since I've been here. So our, our numbers are strong at three hundred and fifty-three. In regards to our homeless population, we're still triaging. There are still some kids, you know, we had an influx of kids after Labor Day that we were unaware of. And there are still some kids out there that we're looking to, to find to make sure we get them into school, whether it be here or at our area high schools.
Are there resources that you can list that the board could help with for some of these challenges?
Not at this time. I just think thanking our teachers and staff because we haven't asked for anything from them and they just, they're supporting these kids. And, and the kid, the, the kids that have been here, I think once it's kind of in your face and it's been very humbling and they've, they've offered to give basically the shirt off their back. Which is pretty amazing. So just understanding and these are our kids and families have been supportive and. We just need some time to kind of triage where we're at at this moment in time.
Any last comments or questions?
Middle school open house?
The twentieth.
Is it that?
Yes.
What is that?
So we did back to school night. The elementary teachers wanted to do that prior to school starting. And then we just wanted middle school to be just a few weeks into school because most of those kids have been here since they were in kindergarten or earlier even. So it's just a time for them to meet middle school teachers and then Mike and I, I believe the board wanted to have a proficiency-based grading presentation, so we will have that playing. In, in the cafeteria. There is an audio recording, so we'll be playing that, have some pamphlets and then Sheri and Pam will be here for anybody that needs to update or help updating with jump rope, infinite campus, stuff like that. So just a time to meet with teachers.
Appropriate, not appropriate for us to be here if someone wants to talk about like initiatives like the upstairs or anything like that?
I mean, you're welcome to comment anytime, yeah.
Trying to get more word out or, you know, we don't have anything prepared. Throughout the year, some of these activities, because parents don't rarely email us or call, but to get in front of them.
There'll be holiday concerts and there's a Halloween trigger treatment usually.
Through the rec department.
Yeah, so if we.
Yeah, but like that, that's like walking the path. I'm not gonna stop talking.
No, there's like a, like something in the gym too usually, isn't there? Or is it just outside now? The Halloween night with Mike Rowe usually.
The rec department, it's usually outside.
Yeah, they do like the trail. It's cool.
Yeah.
I guess when I've been here, it's been like carnival games in the gym and things like that.
And the concert's like a billion degrees.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, that's a time where a number of families hopefully will be here. It's kind of like speed dating for teachers at that time. But, and I, one change too is we're doing a monthly newsletter this year because so many, I can't tell you how many emails I received is what time does school start? What, what's, where's the school calendar? I just think when they get it every week, people just aren't reading it. So we're doing it monthly and as, if there's a big change or something, we'll, we'll send an email out, but. So if the board wants to have something, I don't know if it needs to be warned, but I, we can put something out to middle school families that it's a time to talk to board members if that's.
Or the whole, all families, not just middle school, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's open to middle school families, but we'll let them.
Oh, oh, you mean if we're gonna be there, but it doesn't, I think because we don't have anything prepared, it doesn't make sense to be there for September twenty.
It might be Debbie Downer too, say, hey, we're gonna have this built in three years. Your younger kids' middle school is gonna look a little bit different than this. But I just think, just trying to get more interactive with them. I think that was part of our SU initiative goal setting is just try to be more community oriented, so. You know, I'm sure they know or don't know who we are, but being there and having some like actual conversations versus the stuff I talk about soccer. Just trying to be more open to the public to say, what do they see?
I think the way, usually, I mean, it is a nice idea, but with the presentation and then they go to the teach, this kids' classrooms, right?
Yeah, and I think Mike and I.
It's kind of chaotic.
We're just gonna have the recording playing in the gym and we'll be available. Or pardon me, in the cafeteria, I think we're gonna do it.
Cafe, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if you had anything to add, Mike?
No, I think you did well. I just reiterate, yeah, that the teachers have just really stepped it up without even thinking, you know? And, and like bought things, applied. They change and adjust on the fly and it's just incredible.
I really appreciated how many teachers answered the survey. There were many responses about the second floor, so I do really appreciate that. Moving on. Next up, we have contract recommendations. So for professional staff, we have Amanda McIntyre making a horizontal move and Marsha Turner making a horizontal move. And informational purposes only, we hired Sarah Davis as a custodian substitute or on-call and Susan Perry as a custodian substitute on-call. And then extracurricular, TJ Marianne as the middle school girls soccer coach, Marissa Neary, nay, key favor. Following along as a spelling bee coach, Lorraine Cornell as a spelling bee coach, Bailey Sanders as a student council co-advisor and Katie McDougall as a student council co-advisor. So I need a motion to accept the contract recommendations.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract.
Thank you.
Recommendations?
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Caveat for the record, I don't vote for TJ as the coach.
You're accusing yourself, not a nay, correct?
No, no, just kidding.
I, I want to thank everyone for stepping up in that, especially the extracurricular pool. It's great having teachers and community members helping the school out and helping the kids with different activities and sports.
Oftentimes in addition to work.
Exactly.
After the workday at night, late at night.
Yeah, it's, it takes a lot, so thank you very much. Alright, resignations was put down to the executive session, so we also have a leave request. I need a motion to accept that.
Make a motion to accept that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any requests?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And vacancies were already described by Sarah and are in your packet. Take a peek at. Next up is the board report. I don't, the JRCSU minutes, I believe, are in here, yes. Any questions from those? And then the teacher social we had discussed, trying to get a date to think about that. Does anyone have any thoughts? About doing a teacher social? We had talked about that, I think, over the retreat. Last year, we had done a little like hors d'oeuvre cheese and cracker type thing in the cafeteria, invited all the teachers just to come talk to the board, not with admin there. Just to kind of meet us and basically just build connections and community. So is that something that we want to do now? Do we want to do it later in the year?
I think we should wait till later. It's kind of early yet.
Well, we did it September, I think, last year, September, October.
Staff show up, so.
I think we did it at like five thirty.
Yeah, I would say like November, December. It's still nice out and I don't want them to.
Maybe November, before Thanksgiving.
It's dark out and we're not pulling them away from having fun. Now that we're not fun.
Hors d'oeuvres were fantastic.
Yes, they were. So looking at the calendar. Maybe we could get a couple of dates that you could pull the teachers on and then at our October meeting, we could settle a date. Would that work?
I think that's something that usually do with the union, right?
Is there a date that like?
Oh, so I go through Marcia?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Is there a date that you guys have to stay till like four?
That's on Wednesdays.
Could we do it like at a four o'clock? Just because.
Four fifteen, four fifteen.
Yeah, just so like teachers, they don't have to leave.
Can everyone make a Wednesday?
I just, I think we'll get more teachers there.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah. And alright, so I can reach out to Marcia and ask if there's any, any day, Wednesday in November that doesn't work. Next meeting, does that work for everyone?
That's great.
Okay. Next up, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention is there is the V S B A conference in October. I found it very interesting last year. It's two, it's one night, two days, or one and a half days. It starts relatively early on Thursday, I think the last Thursday of October. And then it's over around lunchtime on Friday. So if you are interested in going, it does come out of the school board budget, like our items, I believe, Louis, is that correct? So you just need to.
Is it the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh?
Yes, so you just need to contact Christine. I believe Collins is trying to go.
I'm the, the backup to the SU's representation.
Chris, can you remind me, do we need a Rutland Town proxy as well?
Yes, but, if Collins wanted to go, you can just nominate him, so.
But we can do that next meeting, correct? Cause this is October twelfth, or is that cutting it too close?
You could do it next meeting if you'd like.
Okay, cause that way he'll know for sure if he's going and we can go from there.
Yes.
Okay.
That sounds good.
So if anyone else wants to go, there was, I think, one school district that everyone came. It's just nice because you're on the same kind of page. You learn all the same new information and you get a little chance to just connect outside of it too. Or almost for sure.
And I think next X U board meeting, we're gonna review what's on the docket and then we'll take that to the October twelfth meeting. It's appropriate for us to at least update what's going on at that, at that state level and what they're pushing through initiatives.
The resolutions we're talking about.
Let me look at my schedule.
Okay. Exactly. It's post-soccer pretty much, so that helps.
Not a bad drive.
No, I like that drive.
Alright, moving on, we have three policies that are first reads. We have F twenty-five, which is a section five oh four and ADA grievance protocol for students and staff. F eleven, English learners, and E twelve, flag display. Did anyone have any concerns?
I just have one question about the English learners. I know a lot of school districts are going to multi-language learners. Instead of English language learners. I didn't know if that's something that we want to look at. I just heard that, I think Vermont actually is going to that.
And I do believe that was a language used on a model policy. If I look into that and bring that to the policy committee. Okay, thanks for bringing that.
I just, just yesterday, did I hear that change, that changed, so.
That would make sense, but I'll double check that and bring the policy.
Well, I, I think, so I think this is for people that don't speak English.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're saying multilingual is?
The, there's a, it's English language learners, the ELL is now changed to MLL. Multi, multi-language learners, I think it was. It came up in a meeting that I was at for school.
That's interesting. Thank you for sharing that.
I just want to make sure we always have the correct, you know.
So with that change, is there a motion on the floor to move those to second reads?
I'll make a motion to move them to second rates.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank, thank you, Abby. Alright, as far as upcoming meetings go, we have October tenth as our next school board meeting. That should be at six P M. in the Rutland Town School Library. Future agenda items, I think in October, we're going to follow up on the second floor, getting costs, follow up on lifetime sports. And I think that's when we're doing our goals update. And that's usually when I think we do our quarterly data and information. Is that correct, Chris?
Data for us?
Yes, I believe so. I'll double check that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll take a look at the timeline, so that may be pushed back within, to November, but I'll check with Lisa Madison tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any teachers or staff or community left, so I'll need a motion to go into executive session?
What that? What is needed to be, what qualifications do you need to be a sub?
Gotta go to Ellen Coyle, gotta pass fingerprint and a background check.
That's it? I'm assuming above eighteen?
Pretty much.
Be above eighteen?
Yeah.
You have a college degree?
No.
Okay. One body. And I know we have coordinators out there, but the more we share, I don't know. I know it seems like we're in a crisis, so.
Thank you.
There's, you know, I'm, I'm looking for four wins volunteers, but.
Yes. Stay at home, stay at home moms, grandmas, and anybody's, stay at home dads, yep, anyone. That's, I mean, I think that's our, that's a good audience to target.
Well, we need help now, so we get paid to do it.
So now I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll take a seven-minute recess till eight fifteen. Or we need to clean up from the cable, so.